Commissioners meeting, uh, we are now in order.
Hey, Tom?
Yes?
Can you get, can you get closer to your mic? You're, you're pretty weak.
Okay. Ah. Can I decide whether to forego the pledge of allegiance, or shall we recite that?
I don't have a flag, so I would prefer we defer.
Yeah, let's forego the pledge of allegiance then. I would ask Kelly to conduct the roll call, please.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Uh, Attorney Clint Smith. And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper present.
Thank you. Uh, let's go through then again, and we'll identify people who have called in. Uh, Jackie, would you like to start?
Yeah, Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
Kara?
Oh, sorry, Kara Evans, BOCC Administrator.
Very. I'm Lieutenant Live and Good Public Health Director, and I have Meredith Nichols, the EM Director, and Alex Anderson, the G.I.S., a million things, guys.
Okay, are you all three on one call?
Yeah, we are.
You did not call in three different phones?
No, not three different phones, just all on my phone.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, uh, good morning and welcome, appreciate you guys calling in. We will try to move along at a fairly brisk pace if we can. Uh, any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None from me.
Jay?
Nope, I said not, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't speak up.
That's okay.
Apologize.
Uh, I don't believe we have any minutes to approve today, so we'll move on to Commissioner items, uh, Commissioner Kanda, would you like to begin?
Sure. Let me get back to the front here. Lot of, uh, lot of activity, uh, along the, uh, the virus frontier, uh, lots of, not issues, but lots of, uh, interesting work that's been going on. I have been in contact with Dennis Hunt at the state level, discussing some things, and I'll get into that later on the last agenda item. Uh, also wanted to, uh, set the record straight, uh, with, uh, the world for, uh, the benefit of Board of Commissioners, uh, uh, I want to defend a couple of things. We do invite the public, uh, to all our meetings to speak, they're free to speak, and by, uh, by, uh, law, of course, um, anybody can do that by making an appointment, getting on the agenda and speaking, uh, you know, to an issue that we have. We'd go a step further, uh, as this Board of Commissioners is very, uh, cognizant and, uh, and mindful of the open sunshine laws, and, uh, we'd go a step further by inviting the public to speak at any meeting, in the front of the meeting, during the issues, and at the end of the meeting, by anybody that's there. That is what I think Tom meant, and Tom will can speak to this later, uh, when he said that, uh, it's a privilege, it's not a right for the public to speak, and that it wasn't meant to be, uh, at, at large, uh, a statement, so I just wanted to make sure that's clear, uh, for the record, and Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, again, I looked up the statutes, we are not required by law to even allow public comment, that was my intent, that it's not a, a statutory right for anybody to have the right to speak in a meeting, that is decided by, uh, the governing board or body, and we have that indicated, we've made it very clear point that we welcome public comment.
Okay, that, that, all right, so, uh, I just wanted to make sure we're taking that out of context.
Well, you're, sorry, Joe, we're never going to be able to control whether somebody takes something out of context or not.
No, I know.
The fact is, we don't have to do it by law, we choose to do that.
Okay, uh, I'll have to, I just wanted to make my point clear from my point of view, so, okay? Uh, that's good, and then also, I wanted to also make sure that the public knows that, uh, we've had a lot of angst over the issue issuance of public health orders from the state and then from the county as well, and so I want to make sure everybody, uh, understands that, uh, that the Public Health Department is not in charge of the county, the County Board of Health with the Public Health, uh, Agency is, uh, accountable, and I'm going to go through some of that and why some of the confusion existed at the, uh, end of the meeting for the last, uh, items that we got on the agenda. So that's all I really wanted to say up front right now, it's good enough for me.
Hey, Commissioner Prince?
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, I, I disagree with what Commissioner Kanda just said about, um, who's in charge of decisions for the county with, like, that, that, that's very clear in my opinion. Um, I, I spent quite a bit of time, um, trying to determine if it's possible to move, um, county property taxes back to July fifteenth, uh, similar to what, uh, President and Congress did for our, um, arrest payments when they need to be made. Um, I, I also spoke with Dennis Hunt, who is truly a gem, I'm, I'm so happy CCI has him, um, at any rate, he, uh, he did some research for me, I did some research, I spoke to Virginia Truffio, uh, who was also, uh, spot with, um, the ordinances that say what we can and what we can't do. Believe it or not, there is a county in Colorado that has moved their property tax deadline back, all of us are kind of scratching our head, wondering how they did that, and we're wondering if they'll be able to hold that, but the bottom line is, the General Assembly who makes, makes the rules, there are ordinances that say when, um, the property taxes are due, and unfortunately for our constituency, um, we, we do not have a, a right to change that date, um, it's been moved slightly, um, there's been a couple of, just a couple of days changed that the Governor put in place, which of course we can follow, but we, Commissioners don't have a right to make any changes there. Um, I also attended the webinar of CCI put on for public officials on how to deal with the coronavirus, um, it, a lot of it's just kind of rehearsing and reminding us, you know, what is the proper protocol, um, I met with, uh, multiple times, one individual who feels that his business is different from the rest of the community, and I've explained to him multiple times that, you know, we're all in this together, including him, so, uh, he may be raising some cane, threatening to get the ACLU involved and all this stuff, and I said, "All right." Anyway, so that's where that went, um, uh, I don't think I have anything else of a Commissioner nature, we've given out, uh, uh, over twenty-five thousand dollars, close to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of grocery vouchers to folks in need, uh, that's all, uh, Walter Van Wootenberg initiated this, many people, including the Mayor of West Cliff, made a significant donation to this project, and I feel we're doing really well on that, other than that, I think that's all I've been up to.
Hey, thank you, sir, appreciate it, uh, I'll just give a quick update on what I've been doing, uh, but before I get to that, I wanted to, uh, throw out a couple of things here, one, uh, Economic Development Company sent us an email giving us the facts and figures on the, uh, US Census, uh, obviously our county response has not been very good, we're, I think, at seventeen point nine percent, uh, definitely, I think, we want to encourage everybody to fill that census out, uh, I filled mine out online, it was very simple to do, took about seven or eight minutes, really, that census is the heart of it, is trying to determine how many people live at each residence, so I know there's an attitude up here, it's nobody's business, well, it is, uh, the government's business, because a lot of our funding at the state and county levels are dependent upon, uh, those census numbers, so I just want to encourage, uh, everybody, uh, through whatever media we're reaching out with today, that, uh, we get those census, uh, questionnaires filled out and sent back, uh, either electronically or through the mail. Also want to publicly thank Vernon for the work he's been doing behind the scenes, uh, I know, uh, he spends a lot of hours doing stuff and just, and he gets a whole lot of credit for that, but I specifically want to thank him for setting up this conference call today and saving us a host. Uh, so, all of this and things that I've been doing, uh, I signed some checks for, uh, Human Services, uh, I also finished up the work on, uh, on writing the RFP, I've got that done, we'll talk about it later, uh, I spoke to some folks in what more important we would be considering, uh, moving the meeting on the fifteenth, so I just wanted them to know kind of ahead of time that that was in the, in the works, uh, I also, uh, met with Jerry Live and Good, and we've worked some, uh, put some more effort on this waterline, which is on the agenda today, so, uh, we can talk about that later on, and then, obviously, I sent the letter that, uh, I put together for the, uh, Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative, and that's also on the agenda, so that's in a nutshell kind of what I've been doing, certainly, we've all been inundated with emails trying to stay on top of, uh, well, with coronavirus, so, also, just want to really encourage, as the Governor has done, uh, in his, uh, press release last night, we just really have to encourage folks in our county to continue to stay home as much as possible, so, uh, so I conclude my Commissioner items, anything else for the good of the order, gentlemen?
Yeah, I had, uh, that reminded me of a few things that I probably should have mentioned, uh, the MOU with the CCED went to them for comment, haven't heard back anything yet, uh, not expecting to do anything with that until the end of the month, uh, at our gift, we, uh, it looks like it may be virtual since they've extended the deadline, uh...
Conference recording started.
Oops, did everybody get a conference recording notice?
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyway, uh, we'll, uh, have that on an agenda item as soon as we can to discuss whatever input they have coming back for their, the, uh, MOU on the broadband, uh, also Armstrong Engineering has, uh, engaged on the, uh, AWI, and we had a meeting with them to, uh, discuss the schedule, basic schedule forward, still, uh, on track, uh, it looks like we'll be able to get it done if, uh, if the, uh, virus permits, uh, we'll get started in, uh, May, uh, or, uh, first part of June, anyway, and, uh...
Bill, excuse me for interrupting, you say you had a meeting, was that a conference call, or?
Yes, it was a conference call, with Armstrong, Lynn, and, uh, Brian Anderson.
Okay, so Brian and Lynn were representing the airport?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, they've been in, uh, several conversations with them since, uh, also we had the, uh, County Assembly happen on Saturday, and everybody participated in that, that was, uh, a good thing to have, I thought everybody handled that pretty well, given the virus problem, it's going to be interesting to see how we do a state level, uh, Assembly online, it's going to be tough, uh, tough couple of days for the delegates to, uh, sit through, uh, that kind of thing on their computer, it's going to be interesting, uh, and, um, so then we'll get into more, uh, later, so, that's, that's all I have for now.
Okay, uh, do you want the, uh, MOU with, uh, Economic Development Company on the agenda for the fifteenth?
No, didn't move it up if there's time.
Hey, Kara, are you okay with that, you can make that happen?
Yes, I'm writing that down right now.
So, consideration of the MOU Economic Development Company on the thirty-first.
Okay, I've got it.
Anything else, gentlemen, to the Commissioner item? If not, we'll move on, uh, Upper Ark Water Report, uh, the only thing I would report, uh, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this, um, Bergemeister, the Attorney for Upper Ark, had submitted a proposed order for the judge to consider that would dismiss, um, I think sixteen or seventeen people out of that lawsuit as of April fourteenth if they did not file a response, um, and I think last Friday was the deadline for that, so, uh, I had a couple of phone calls about that, actually, and, uh, uh, from the people that were getting ready to be dropped out of that, dismissed out of that lawsuit, which certainly, and we talked about it last week, would include the county commission.
Can I, uh, ask a question, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Should we, thank you, should we continue to have this as a continuing agenda item since, um, we feel that our mission has been accomplished on this?
Uh, I'm going to say yes, because I will continue to go to those meetings, uh, it really, I see it being on here irrespective of whether the lawsuit's pending or currently happening, I just think, uh, if any of us go to the Upper Ark, we need to be reporting back to our county, so I'd like to leave it on.
I think it should be on normal, anyway, because it helps keep the communications going, which was one of the major problems on the, on the, we had in the past, I like to leave it on also, and, um, and we'll keep, uh, updating the, uh, progress on that, uh, because the water users, uh, with the Blue Line Committee meetings, which I have not gotten the last minute out yet, but I got them, and, and loaded up, I hadn't been able to get the minutes, I just sent forward to everybody, but I'll try to get that done soon, last meeting.
Okay, um, is Attorney Smith on?
You know, I'm not seeing, uh, Clint in right now, he had some trouble calling in for some reason, I'm going to work, trying to work with him on that.
Hi, I thought I heard somebody else join, so, uh, I thought it was maybe him, well, we can, uh, we can move the attorney items down to whenever it's appropriate, if he gets on this morning, so, uh, administrative assistant items, I just, I'm so curious to know what our admin assistant has to report today, I've been looking forward to this for over a week.
Oh, good, really glad, um, actually, I did want to say just one thing.
Hey, um, can I interrupt?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure both county commissioners, uh, and myself are ready to take notes on this, because this is the first time. Go ahead.
It's not a big thing, y'all don't, it's not like you're directing for the Commissioner. Uh, it's just that, I just wanted everybody else on the call to know that since I'm not in the office every day, the best way to get ahold of me is through the email, not calling the office, because I don't think I even have a voicemail that you can leave a voicemail on, um, so if you do need to get ahold of me for information or to get me, give, uh, me something to get to the Commissioner, make sure, just email me.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, that's all, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to public comments. Anybody have anything? Hearing none, we'll move on, gentlemen, any unfinished business?
I have none, sir.
None here.
Nor do I, uh, we'll move on to new business, we'll allow public comment as we go through these action items, uh, the first item of business is consideration of canceling the April eighth meeting, we need to get on that as quickly as possible, uh, what's a good suggestion?
I move that we cancel the April eighth, two thousand and twenty BOCC meeting, considering the events going on in the county, uh, of pandemic virus.
I second.
Been moving seconded to cancel the meeting for April eighth at nine o'clock in the morning, uh, discussion, I just think, uh, I want to ask Vern if he could, uh, post that as soon as possible if this motion passes, so we have notification. Vern, are you, are you on? Yeah, he may be trying to get, uh, Clint on.
Sorry, did you, uh, I'm sorry, were you talking to me, sir?
Yes, I was, I wasn't sure if you were on or off, but, uh, yeah, uh, we're in discussion of the motion to cancel the meeting for tomorrow, and I was just asking if this motion passes, can we get that posted as soon as possible on the website?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I was, I was on the, I was on the phone with, uh, Clint, by the way, he's trying to, uh, his cellphone is having issues.
Okay, yeah, I mentioned when you didn't answer that you might have been helping, trying to get Clint on, so, other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, uh, all in favor of canceling the meeting tomorrow, April eighth, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, um, so Vern could post that, and, uh, let, electronic twenty-four hour notification is sufficient, um, so we should be good there. Uh, next item of business, consideration of signing the staff reports, um, I think, gentlemen, you should have those in the board packet, uh, we'll take a minute to pull those up. We'll start with the, uh, OEM staff report. And I would move that we, uh, approve the reports submitted by the OEM Manager, Meredith Nichols.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, been moving seconded to approve the, uh, staff report from the Office of Emergency Management, discussion?
Um, my discussion is we generally don't approve staff reports, that's not a, that's not our MO, but is that something you want to do because they're not here verbally submitting them to us?
Well, yes, sir, uh, and we do approve staff reports, when we get them, we have always approved and signed the VSO, and we approve and sign the Treasurer's report, and so, uh, I think, uh...
Well, that, that was just those specifically, wasn't it, Tom, because there was a requirement for that, that I, I think, uh, Rosebridge we've never voted on.
No, I'm just going, sorry, I'm just going through the ones that we do routinely approve and sign, uh, and...
Right, I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah.
I think, Mer- Meredith, don't, didn't we start approving yours, not necessarily your report, um, this will be the third month, but your, um, hours because of that grant?
Correct, yeah, I, starting this year, I have to have my supervisor sign, um, my time sheet every month now.
Right, and that's where I was headed, I guess it's part of a report, it's not her entire report, but it's the time sheets that she needs to have signed and sent into the space.
Kind of quick, quick, James.
Clint, are you there?
Any further discussion on, uh, time sheets for OEM? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, uh, motion carries, I will sign that electronically and return that to Meredith, if that's, if an electronic signature is okay, Meredith.
Yeah, it is, thank you.
You're welcome, I will make sure to do that, and I'll send that to you today.
Appreciate it.
You're entirely welcome. Thank you, gentlemen, uh, next item of business, oh, sorry, the next, uh, staff report would be, uh, VSO report.
I move that we approve the VSO report as presented for March twenty twenty.
Been moving seconded to approve the March twenty twenty VSO report, uh, discussion, gentlemen?
Um, I will, if I may, I'm not sure this is really appropriate, but, um, uh, John, VSO Officer, has mentioned to me a couple of times that he has quite a bit of food available, so if we can get the word out there, if anybody, uh, needs groceries and food type things, he has a stockpile, and such as for veterans, anybody who asks him, I just wanted to put that out, he's been unbelievably terrific.
Good, okay, yeah, I, I have made special note of the fact that he had a hundred and nineteen food assistant contacts, so that's certainly up, uh, obviously more than his norm, so, yeah, I agree, I think he's been doing a great job, so. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the VSO report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, myself, Jay, I think, did you vote?
I, I did, sir, I said aye, I'm sorry, I'll speak up.
No, that's okay, I think you and Bill may have voted at the same time, I don't know, so, uh, if the motion carries, uh, I will, um, I'll electronically sign that and, as well, and send it back, and then I'll talk to John, if he needs it on hard copy, I'll take care of that. Thank you, gentlemen, um, and then the next staff report is the Treasurer's report.
Um, approve the Treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second that motion, yeah, thank you, Bill, uh, been moving seconded to approve the Treasurer's report for March twenty twenty, discussion? I did not call Virginia and ask her if there was anything, but I'm assuming if there was something out of the ordinary, she would have pointed it out to us when we did this report out, uh, so if there's no further discussion, we'll, we will proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the Treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, uh, and I will sign and send that as well. And then, uh, let me just check something real quick, gentlemen, I beg your indulgence, yeah, the hard written ones are on the agenda, so we'll wait to deal with that, uh, I believe that was all the staff reports that, that I was aware of that we needed to handle at this time, uh, gentlemen, you would agree or no?
I agree, I did hear, I did hear the comment, sir, which is private.
I'm just saying, I think those three were the only reports that I was aware of that I needed to deal with.
I agree, thank you, sir.
Tom?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Can you send me a copy of Virginia's report also, please?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, that's the only one you need.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, I'll do that.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is ratification of stamping handwritten checks, um, Miss Donna sent those out to us, um, the total for those were six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
I, I move we ratify the signing of the, of the handwritten, or the stamping of the checks, handwritten checks.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that, uh, it's been moving seconded to approve or to ratify the stamping of the handwritten checks, and I just wanted to say, typically, I have been signing those, but they literally were stamped because of the, uh, of the coronavirus and our separation from the courthouse. Further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote, all in favor, uh, approving or ratifying, uh, stamping of the handwritten checks, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, um, we'll move on, then, consideration of moving April fifteenth meeting location, um, what's a good pleasure?
What, uh, what would be intent on that?
Well, originally I'd put location, I didn't mean a physical location, I meant change the format and the location, so I think it'll have to be another remote, uh, electronic meeting.
I, I move that we move... I, I'll move that we move, uh, the April fifteenth meeting from Wetmore to an electronic meeting such as the one we're doing now, uh, to comply with the governor's, uh, mandate that came out last night, uh, of, to the twenty-sixth, I believe it was. Uh, so I, I, I moved that. My motion is April fifteenth meeting be done, uh, telephonically like we're doing now.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second the motion. They moved and seconded to move the meeting from Wetmore on April fifteenth to a, uh, remote meeting, uh, telephonically. Discussion?
Um, i- if I may, I think we need to do as good a job as we possibly can, and I know Vern has worked very hard on this, to get the word out that anybody can dial in this number, um, and they can join the, the meeting at any time. I, I'm concerned that we're not fulfilling, as, as, we need to do the best job we can to make sure the public has access to these meetings.
Okay, your point's well taken, sir. I agree. Um, and so, I had a conversation with Vernon this morning about the possibility of trying to do something, uh, via Zoom or Skype or whatever, so we have some visual as well as audio. Uh, I agree with his concern that it's so dependent upon everybody's internet connection. I'm just not sure that it's feasible. I, I, I'm not saying I'm against trying it, but I'm afraid we'd have, uh, some issues with our internet connection.
Please go.
Okay, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, uh, well, I just want to ask, and they might as well get it cleared up now, um, telephonically, are you leaving that up to Vernon, or are you assuming we will continue with conferencecall.com?
I have any would be, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Freeconference.com is, the county already has, so I would assume we're going to continue using exactly what we have now.
Right, that would be my thought too, uh, for Mr. Kanda. I just, Jay made the motion, so I just wanted some clarification.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Further debate? During none, we'll vote. All in favor of, um, moving the meeting from Wetmore on April fifteenth to a telephone conference call, uh, remotely, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Vernon, if you'll make a note of that, we will, and if you want to host, that's fine. I'd like to do that, either one, doesn't matter to me.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, we'll assume you're going to host it again then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And that's the, what, what, what date is that?
April fifteenth.
Okay.
Nine AM. And again, while we're talking about the meeting itself, this is a little off topic, but if you have any agenda items, reach out to Kara or myself. We'll make sure they get on that agenda. Okay, we'll move on. Consideration of the landfill, uh, request for proposals. Uh, I sent that out, gentlemen. What's this pleasure?
What, uh, what was your intent here? Is this, is this the RFPs for what? It was, um...
Did you read it, Bill?
Yeah, I did. I don't mean for what. What is the intent here, Tom? Are we approving? Are we approving?
Yeah, I'd like to get approval on the RFP so we can move forward and get this work done, or at least get the contract out for an RFP.
Okay, so I move we approve the RFP for the landfill.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Okay, sorry, Jay.
That's fine, that's fine. You're welcome.
Tom?
Yes?
This is Jackie. Um, can you be a little more specific on what that's about, because we don't have access to the...
Yeah. Yeah, during discussion, I will get to that, yeah. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the RFP for the landfill, uh, discussion, and I appreciate your questions back. Let me pull up that, um, I, we did not get it in the board packet, but I emailed that to everybody this morning, so...
I have it right there.
Everybody, I emailed it to the commissioners and the attendants. Um, give me just a second here. Um, so I wrote a cover letter and an RFP, uh, to s- to secure a contract for completing the excavation of the final, or of the exist, the last existing trench out of the landfill. We have about five hundred lineal feet of trench that we need to get dug. Uh, we'll take a scraper to do that, and so as gentlemen, as you can read, the RFP was for five hundred lineal feet of a landfill trench. Uh, the trench profile is ninety-three feet wide at the top and thirty-four feet wide at the bottom, with a, um, total depth from natural grade of twenty feet. And so it would, uh, the bid was to include, uh, excavation costs, including mobilization, demobilization, fuel, labor, and equipment. Uh, the contract will be awarded May one, uh, and then the work to be completed, uh, thirty days, uh, from the start of excavation, which are also thirty days from the date of the award. Uh, if this motion passes today, we'll certainly put this on the website, uh, so that any, if the parties can, uh, do this, and we can send this out to if we need to. Um, is the, the project bid must be received by April twenty-seventh? Uh, that was the date that I wrote into this RFP when I wrote it, so if you guys have an opinion about maybe moving that back, we can, but if we do, then I'll have to rewrite the RFP. I think the twenty-seventh's probably reasonable, Bill.
I think it is too, right now, Tom.
Okay.
And, and it should go out in the newspapers as well. You plan to put it in the newspaper?
That is correct. We, thanks for bringing that up, Bill. I, I think because most likely, I think our, our contractor will be local, uh, I would like to at least put it in, or I'm sorry, I would like to put it in the papers twice.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, let me look and see if that's going to be a conflict with the date. Uh...
It'll work.
Let me check my calendar real quick here, uh...
It'll go out this week, the ninth and tenth, and sixteenth and seventeenth.
I think, uh, this, the Tribune has said the deadline for their material is noon on Monday.
No, so that's...
If that's the case, then, uh, I think in a Sentinel Poll, it could still make it happen, but I don't know about that.
Uh?
Yes.
Is this your flower?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Elliot, this is Elliot from the Tribune. Go ahead and submit it to Jordan. Yeah.
I've read through the emails, said Monday at noon was the deadline.
Extraordinary times. Extraordinary measures. He'll, he'll, he'll go, he'll, he'll publish it.
Okay. Um, so that would give us easily two weeks' notice then. And, uh, good morning, Elliot. Thanks for being on. I wasn't aware that you had joined us.
I came in late. Technical difficulties.
Okay, um... And Jackie, do you have the question, uh, is there something else specific that you didn't know about this, or I didn't want to read the whole thing?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I just have one quick question. How long usually, how much time are we getting out of those, um, those trenches? Uh, you said it was the last one for this landfill, so how long can we expect this to last?
Yeah, it's a great question, and, uh, I talked to Rusty at length about that. Their estimate is, uh, three years depending on the use, and he said the use is just increasing every year. So, he said to be safe, that he said we should get two years out of that. We probably be good. He told us three. And it's the last existing landfill trench. We hope to get permitted for at least one more, uh, thousand-foot trench, or fifteen-hundred-foot trench, and then maybe one more shorter trench before we go to the area landfill.
So that's a total of roughly, uh, what, eight, se- seven years, maybe?
Uh, between the two additional trenches?
Yeah, all three together, so three ingredients.
Yeah, I would think so, Bill.
I was talking to him, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, we're not going to get quite the same length of trench over there east of the, of the entrance to the landfill, because there's just not that much room, but I would say, I would sure hope we get five years minimum, uh, finishing up this trench and then starting a new trench over on the east side before we have to go to the area landfill.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Appreciate it. Anything else?
I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Is this something that we put all the trenches out, or have we in the past dug our own trenches?
Oh, this will be the first RFP we've dug our own.
That's what I thought.
We've lost the, uh, excuse me, why haven't we not digged our own on this one? Is we lost our operator?
And who was that?
Rusty, correct. Rusty Christensen, uh, always ran that, uh, scraper, uh, either during his regular workday and weekends and after work. I mean, we just don't need a lot of time running that scraper to get those landfill trenches dug, because we were renting that piece of equipment, and it became a matter of get as much work done as we could, so.
So this is, with the change of guard over at the landfill, this is an additional expense that we've not previously incurred?
That's right, yeah.
No, it won't be an additional.
Other, other than the rental.
We budgeted for this project, so, and we budget for it every year, we have anyway, so it's not an additional expense. It'll be utilizing the funds differently than we have in the past.
Provided that it comes under the cost, provided it comes in under the cost of the rental.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a decision we'll have to make when we look at the bids.
Right. And it may be that we'll get it cheaper, who knows, than the rental.
Right, yeah, we'll just have to see what the bids come in at and, and, uh, uh, move forward from there. Can you hold on just a second, gentlemen? I need to catch up with a couple of notes here. Uh, I'm going to get behind. I'd like to tell you that I could talk and type at the same time, and then I'll end up typing what I was saying, and that won't work. Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, I just had to make a correction on the RFP, uh, so that it goes out in the right format. Um, any further discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, I do have an item here, uh, that reminded me when we started talking about the landfill. Uh, I had asked Rusty to put together a, uh, you know, some trade on, uh, waiving the dump fee.
Hey, hold on, Bill, because we're in discussion of whether or not to approve the...
Oh, I'm sorry. We hadn't voted yet, haven't we?
No.
Go ahead.
We're just in discussion of that, so... Um, so we will post this on the website. Uh, the three papers. And do we want to try to send a copy out to the companies locally that we would assume would bid on this? Or just let them go to the website or whatever?
I, I'm concerned that if we send it out to the people we think, and we happen to miss one, um, that it may come back to, um, show bias, so I would feel if we put it in the papers, I think, to me, that makes the most sense.
I agree.
I agree, yes, I do too, Jay. That's a great point. Uh... And who's to say that in all of our great knowledge, we know all the companies that would be up there, we probably don't, so I think that's a great point, Jay. Um, further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the RFP as written for the landfill, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. I appreciate that. Rusty and I put some hours in on that, dude, so it's good to have that, uh, cleaned up and behind us. Thank you. Can you guys hear okay?
Yes, fine. Stay up there, be back.
Okay. Next item of business, consideration of buying materials for the waterline?
Tom?
Yeah.
I, I started the, the landfill, shoot me on a, on a thing, the waiving the dump fee we were going to do tomorrow. If all things had been equal, we were going to present that so we could understand it. How do we want to handle that? Because the longer we wait, the more, uh, less the value of doing that, you know? Would be a benefit to get it done if we're going to do it.
Well, did you bring that up under public comment or additional items of business at the end of the meeting, Bill?
That's what I was figuring. I just wanted to remind you guys.
Okay. Good, thank you. Uh, we'll move on then, if that's all right, sir. Uh, consideration of buying waterline materials. That project kind of got shelved and, uh, uh, had a couple of phone, had two phone calls about it, wanting to know where we're at, if we were going to move forward, and so on and so forth, so, uh, I would move, for the sake of, uh, conversation and nothing else, I would move that the, uh, the county commissioners, uh, purchase the materials for that waterline project not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. They moved and seconded, uh, the county purchased the, uh, materials for the waterline of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, I said to commissioners, I didn't really mean the commissioners, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't assume Rosie did.
And what budget will it be coming out of?
Uh, capital improvement.
How much is in there now? I don't have my budget in front of me, do you know?
Oh, I don't even, mine's in my notebook at the office, uh...
It's, that's up there. We have well in excess of that, I'm assuming?
Uh, yes, we are. I'd say we certainly are in excess of thirty thousand.
Okay, then I'm fine.
And then, so that you know, the, uh, Wet Mountain Fire Protection District has earmarked money for that as well as the fair board. So, I, I put thirty thousand in right now. It's a pretty rough estimate. We got a list of the materials, um, we kind of fine tuned that, but the last time we, we had an estimate from that company, it was, it was going to be between twenty-five and thirty, so I put thirty thousand in there.
Okay. Um, maybe we ought to change it to approximately thirty thousand, since it may be thirty-one or thirty-two thousand, twenty-eight, we don't really know.
Uh, yeah, I'd move to amend the motion just to strike the word "not in excess" of, and put approximately, and insert the word approximately thirty thousand.
I'd second the amendment.
Okay, they moved to second it to amend the motion, striking the word "not to exceed" and insert the word "approximate." Uh, discussion?
Yeah, what does that do for us, Jay? I don't understand, because if, if it goes over that, are we good with that? Is that what you, you mean, or is, or what?
Yes, that, that's what I meant. I was, I, yeah, I was concerned that if it came into thirty-one thousand five hundred, do we need to come back, not award, not buy it, and then go ahead and have to re, you know, ratify it later? I just thought, you know, we know approximately what it is, but we really don't know what it's going to be.
Maybe you ought to, well, how far is approximately? Is ten thousand more dollars approximate, or is one? Uh, maybe you ought to...
How about ten percent of the estimate?
That's fine. A thirty thousand, a three thousand dollar leeway.
Right, yeah. Bill, you come through with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, public comment, sorry. Hearing none, will proceed to vote.
Uh, Mr. Flower?
Yes, go ahead.
This, this is Elliot, I just want a, a point of, uh, clarification. This is the water line going out to the Saddle Club headquarters from Fortinane in West Cliff?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it terminates at the Saddle Club property, goes through the fairgrounds as well, yes, and the county, uh, shop property.
And the area.
Right.
Right, yes, so it's the same one you all have been talking about, okay, thank you.
That is correct, you're welcome. Hearing no further discussion, will, uh, proceed to vote on the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, amendment passes. Uh, any further discussion on the main motion, which would reach to buy the materials at an estimate of thirty thousand dollars?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is Jackie, um...
Yes.
Is, is, uh, is work stopped on that, because road and bridge, it was my understanding they were gonna do the work, because they are not working, are we not gonna do the work? What's the deal on that?
That's a good question. Uh, the general conversation was, uh, yes, work is stopped, uh, but there was no reason to start the work until we bought the materials, and now we believe we need to have the materials here, so when we do come back online, uh, that can go right into the schedule, and we can get moving forward on that project. So there is not, now, there is not a, uh, start date on that project. Any, any further public comment? Hearing none, will proceed to vote, all in favor of purchasing the materials for the water line, uh, for approximately thirty thousand dollars, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you, motion carries. Um, I will get with, um, we really have two main points to contact there, gentlemen, Ron Beckner and Jerry Lydon, good, um, so I will get with those gentlemen, and we'll move forward with that. Okay, uh, next item of business, consideration of signing the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative, again, I sent out that letter, uh, to you gentlemen, uh, for your, uh, consideration. We did this last year, um, that scholarship, I think, was given out, I cannot tell you who it was, but, uh, the counselor sent, uh, an email, uh, asking if we would write a letter of support, uh, we are not committing to any funding.
Um, I'm not a member or a commissioner, I'd like to let her admit if that's possible.
Hey, hold on, Jay, you were breaking up, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say you're not a member?
With the signature lines on the first, like, let me do this properly, I don't know if that will be, um, sign the letter in support of, uh, the, um, scholarship, uh, as presented by Department of Higher Education.
I'll second the motion. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to sign the letter of support to, uh, Department of Higher Ed, discussion.
Yeah, uh, I felt it, well, probably a discussion, my signature line just has me, my title as member.
Yes.
And, um, so I would, I would like to, uh, that changed, the commissioner, please.
Okay. I thought the last time we did that, it, that you had requested to be member, that's the only reason I put it on there, so I'm sorry. Maybe it was just the officer.
Yeah, no, I, I never go by member.
Okay, all right, thank you. Consider that change is made, 'cause I just did it, so.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. My mistake.
No problem.
Uh, yeah, I know, that was the only thing I really wanted to mention, was he talked about that funding, uh, available amount of thirty-five hundred dollars, that, I don't, that's what the grant is for, for thirty-five hundred dollars, I don't, it's my understanding that we are not committing to that solid figure in the commission.
Correct.
Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, will proceed to vote, all in favor of authorizing the signing of the letter to the, uh, Director of the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative, say aye.
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 Uh, I will get a copy of that, uh, again, I will check with him to see if electronic signature is, uh, acceptable, and if it is, then I will sign it and send it on to you gentlemen via email, and then you can return it to me, and I'll get it back to, uh, Troy, if that's okay?
Sure.
Kelly, we doing okay for recording?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, I was, I was answering another, uh, well, I wasn't answering it, I was indicating on my phone that I was in a meeting, uh, we did get a vote on that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Get out of this.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure Kel and I were on the same page, Doug.
We're on the same page.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Um, next item of business, consideration of county emergency, concept of operations, responsibilities, and authorities, and discussion of current emergency orders that are in effect. Mr. Tanda, I think you requested that to be put on the agenda?
Yeah, I did, and I, I'll, I'll simplify it, 'cause I have, the intent is to just bring up, uh, two issues that are major, in my view, and that we need to, to not necessarily solve in this meeting, but to come up with a way forward. I sent you all a, a quick, uh, hand sketch, if I did, do you wanna pull that up? I can talk to it, it's easier to take a look at it, and, uh...
Can I ask you a question before we do that, Bill?
Sure, yeah.
So, I don't, I'm not sure what the C-O-N-O-P, I mean, I get it's just concept of operations, were you talking about the COOP plan, the Con- Continuity of Operations Plan?
No, no, it, there's, it, no, it's really the, uh, it's really the plan itself for the Custer County Public Health Agency, and doing the research, uh, it, it, it was established in two thousand and six when they first started doing, they had two thousand and nine was the deadline to do it, uh, to get it on, or before that time, the counties to set them up, excuse me, to set them up, um, and, uh, whoever at the time did it, uh, was, uh, in two thousand and six, two thousand and nine, couldn't find any resolutions yet, and I've asked Kelly to look into it, what the resolutions were, uh, and how they stated standing up that agency at the time. But the result, uh, has been, and it then, and Meredith then, uh, or Alyssa's doing a very good job of operating to what is on that docket, but it really is primarily, uh, an emergency operations center concept of actually executing, uh, shows the, the, uh, chain of command, the infrastructure that's behind actually working a, a, a crisis, like fire, whatever, uh, and setting up how you would do that, and get people, uh, into the hospitals, and all that kinda thing. It does not set up the infrastructure of the, of the agency on, on how they would, uh, deal with, uh, uh, you know, who knew at that time we'd have a crisis this, like we have now, which is completely different, one of a kind, where you would want to make sure, um, how you coordinate, um, the, uh, issues that come to, to be, to the attention of the Public Health Board. So, let me talk just, uh, so that I can clarify those, and I've got Dennis Hunt involved in depth, and as a matter of fact, he volunteered to come down here and work through the, uh, uh, you know, the statutes and all that with us, as we go through, maybe trying to potentially clean up the documentation and the authorities that are necessary.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If we could do too far in this, like, this kinda, kind of an, I don't know, what we're working on, is the purpose of this is to dilute the public health nurses' authority in making decisions regarding the COVID nineteen waters? Is that the purpose of this?
No, it's not, no, it's not, Jay, it's, the intent is to make it legal, what we are doing. Right now, uh, at least according to Dennis, uh, the, uh, what we, the legal authority, pull up my little chart.
I'm looking at it, it's kinda hard to understand, but I'm looking at it.
Okay, it's hard to understand, because it's just a sketch, um, what's gets there are the lines of authority, those are the solid lines, going from the governor down to the counties, the dash line around the B O C C box there is, is Custer County, just for example, and, and at the bottom it says, "The administrative arm of the state," the counties are the administrative arm of the state, and by statute, according to Dennis, uh, the, uh, the B O C C, the county commissioners, is, is the accountable authority to spend taxpayer dollars to be executing the laws, and, and, you know, the administrative arm of the, the state passes down for us to, uh, execute. Um, well, I bow to the side, and, and by the way, the B O C C has the option to, to, uh, stand up a, or, uh, the, and if they were asked to come up with a plan for the county public health agency, and the plan is not an emergency operations plan, it's a plan is, what is, what are the authorities, or who, who's doing what? Now, the board, the health board is, uh, we, uh, from time to time, do adjourn to become a health board, but we are the B O C C, and, and the health board, if we had a separate board, would be reporting to the B O C C. Um, and so, by statute, uh, we have the authority, must have the authority, to execute, uh, the kinds of trades that would be involved in executing and enforcing the, uh, recommendations from the state, or the orders from the state. Now, if you go down to the right, uh, this Colorado Department of Health and Education has a dash line, because there's, those are recommendations, uh, if you look at the current, uh, governor's orders, they're not orders, most of, and, and in fact, Dennis points out that every one of them are recommendations, uh, that they...
I disagree, but...
Well, you can disagree, I'm just telling you what Dennis said, that, I'm not gonna defend it one way or the other, I'd like, my point is, there, there are some that are, and some that aren't.
Okay, I thought you said all of them were, I...
Well, Dennis, Dennis made a bodacious statement, said all of them are, but, you know, I look at it, and, and, and I, I don't know whether it's to the eyes of the beholder, or how you interpret it, but regardless, uh, the point there being is that Alyssa has been hired by the county health board to execute, uh, and, and bring in those, uh, orders for, um, for consideration. The approval authority to accept those, or push back, and I got a little statement down there, says "accept or push back," uh, we don't have to accept every, uh, uh, rule, or even if it were an order that the governor sends down, you know, if it impacts the appropriated funds that we have, that we cannot do something that, that we, we can't pay for, or that doesn't apply to the county per se, 'cause a lot of the, uh, governor, in a, in the task force he has set up, deals with heavy population centers, and some of them are practical, for example, riding a bike around town, it may be more, uh, uh, danger in the city than it is with our Amish people riding the class, uh, in the valley here, as an example, is it smart to just, uh, endorse it, or push back on it? That, that's just an example. And so, um, and then, then we have the option to, to, of course, do more than that, specific to the county, and Alyssa's got several of those that they, uh, in, put in the order, uh, that were specific to Custer County. That still has to be endorsed, uh, and voted upon by resolution, according to Dennis Hunt, by the Custer County Health Board, which consists, in our case, of the commissioners, that's where the, uh, the responsibility and the, the, um, authorities, and also the liability lie with us, uh, you know, we, it, it, there is no way, uh, that it was ever intended that, that a public health, uh, nurse, or not nurse, but the director, would have the, the authorities, it, it's like, he said, "Look at it like a tool that the county has to take recommendations, or, uh, or not to execute, uh, those recommendations from the, the state level." Uh, and, you know, that's up, that, that, that still has to be, and every move we make, he says, must be by resolution. Now, he, he, in getting into that, I asked Alyssa last night for the, uh, handbook, the plan itself, and that's why she sent that out, uh, uh, to all of us last night, and that established the county health department, but I can't mind a resolution that it delegates any authority of, uh, out of the hands of the commissioners into the director's, um, uh, responsibility. You wouldn't want that, because that director could, uh, uh, commit the county to things that we couldn't pay for, or that we would be liable for with lawsuits. He actually used the term, it's, um, you know, the, uh, uh, the county, county powers, it's thirty dash eleven dash one oh one, and it's the county, uh, commissioners that have the power to sue and to be sued, in other words, we're accountable, not, not, uh, you can't delegate that.
Thirty dash... Sorry, Bill.
Thirty eleven dash one oh one is the county powers, according to Dennis, okay? Uh, twenty-five dash one dash, or, excuse me, two, yeah, um, dash one oh six establishes, maintains, and gives authority, um, as well, so, what we, what we need to do, my view, is, is, first of all, this is, we can do it parallel, we, we need to clean up the actual legal documents that are standing up this office, and, and find the resolutions, if they exist, and if they don't, establish the, the correct, uh, authority. He told me, uh, that the order that we sent out, uh, on the, the twenty dash twenty-four for Custer County Public Health Order, twenty, twenty-four implementing stay-at-home order order, is not legal, and, and it's a, uh, recommendation only, is, is the way we would approach that. Uh, none of these, even in the county, the ones that we did separately for the county, are not binding, uh, and, uh, we need to clean them up, that they can be put out as recommendations to the, our citizens, if that, if we didn't feel like to continue this way, or, uh, they can become an order if, uh, if we vote on it, as a public health board, that these recommendations, uh, become an order and make them, uh, enforceable. The problem is, you need, in order to make those kinds of decisions, and if you look on the left side of my little chart there, it, it, I use the word "task force," I use the word "battle staff," it can be a tire team, what it really is, is something that should have been established in the stand-up of the public health agency, on how we would interact and, uh, get input, because you would never wanna put it in the hands of just three people, for example, or even one, that the ability, first of all, you don't have the manpower to, to go around and, and make, uh, helpful decisions on what applies to certain businesses, uh, if we wanted to close some, or open some, or, or, uh, up wider, or whatever. Some counties, uh, establish a, uh, the health agency, has that power to make those trades, but it still is accountable, and we report it up to the board of commissioners. So, in, in my case here, this, uh, input for, uh, for implementing the, um, the recommendations of the county health director, would have to consider all aspects, you gotta figure out how to enforce it, so you need input from the sheriff. Now, the sheriff on the org chart that they sent out, that Meredith sent me, is, uh, Alyssa, it's, it shows the sheriff in there, but they're looking, that's from a point of view of the operations, and if there are issues going on legally, enforceable, you need to block roads, or whatever. I'm talking about, uh, implementation and execution on the, uh, bigger picture, that would be, uh, have implications, can we enforce, uh, a, a law that we would pass, or a resolution? Is it practical, do we have the manpower to shut down the county roads? How are we gonna make sure, for example, that somebody staying out of here... How are we going to make sure, for example, that somebody staying out of here for later, longer than twenty-four hours, coming back actually was gone longer than twenty-four hours? Or if he came back, how can we stop him from coming back? You can't do that constitutionally, according to Dennis. But, but be that what it is, there may be others that should be on that, um, task force or that tiger team for recommendations to the board of commissioners to either take a look at the options in the trades on each one. For example, the fire department, the school, the town mayor's. They ought to be able to represent the business interests of the towns of the county. And then what about the businesses that are outside the, the city? Maybe there's other business leaders that should be, uh, or could be tapped. And I'm not talking about once in a, in a while. I think that we should have regular meetings during the crisis to, uh, understand what the state is asking us to do and commit our resources to legally, uh, to make the decisions, to pass resolutions, to enforce things or not. And, uh, so we need to be on top of, not from a point of view of an emergency operation. Whenever you're getting a SIP rep on, uh, right now we got five people that are, that have the virus and, and we need test kits and, and, uh, we need a team of people with stretchered dragon bodies out of the woods or, or whatever. I'm talking about staying on top of the, of the process and making sure we get inputs that do, uh, help us make decisions for the, the health, the economic health and wellbeing of the county at the same time, and we're balancing it with the, uh, health, the, uh, and the welfare and the, the safety of our citizens. He said some counties today have not shut down anything. They're doing business as usual. Their, their road crews are out and about, uh, county courthouse is wide open. Uh, and he named a couple of them. He didn't, he didn't want me to, to use that as a big example, but, uh, and so there's a variety. But the bottom line really was, we, the commissioners, are the authority and we are the, uh, uh, kind of body for, for, uh, for the impacts. So what I was going to suggest is that I, I would like to see if we could get Jay and Clint, Dennis volunteered to come down here and discuss that with us. And I would leave it up to, to Jay if we agree to, to do this, to kind of take a look and let's make sure our lines of authority and our, our, uh, that comply with what the intent of, uh, of the, uh, law is, the statutes at the state level when we've set, set this up. Our commissioners in the past set this up. I would also like to, uh, take, uh, you know, that, uh, opportunity during that time that to set up and have a discussion with, um, uh, us to, as a health board, to set up what we would like to have as input to help us make good decisions and help enforce or implement the recommendations from the public health director. And also we want to keep in mind that we have to separate, this is not, um, the both O E M and the public health agency work for the commissioners. They, they are, uh, separate agencies underneath us. And we want to make sure that we, um, figure, and I think that, I see a good, uh, con op going from that point of view with Alyssa and Meredith today. I like their, uh, org structure, et cetera. Now, um, anyway, that's, uh, sort of, I just wanted to get the, the conversation going and, and then look, uh, forward on that, uh, if we can. Uh, and, and if you look at the, uh, my little drawing there, I, I, I don't call it a public health board, but if you see above the B O C C, you see the, uh, we have social services, the same thing. We adjourn and we, we convene, we have the board of equalization, same thing, comes through us. Board of Public Health is the next one. And that's where the public health agency reports to or through. Um, that's, uh, uh, just to get the discussion going here and, and let's kind of figure out as a team. We're a team here. This is not a, not, uh, this is not criticizing anybody or trying to, to, uh, worry about it in any other way other than we want to do the right thing as well as do the best thing for the citizens of our county, to protect them and to protect the, what the economy we currently have, uh, from getting worse. So, uh, fire away at it.
Uh, comments, Jay?
Yeah, um, you know, if we don't have a written policy on how we handle a, a medical emergency, I agree there's probably something that needs to be done. And I appreciate Dennis Hunt. Um, I personally use him when I have questions. And I find him to be very, um, articulate and he knows what's going on. However, I am not willing to go very far with this without having Clint involved and having Clint's input into what the law specifically says, um, with reference to, uh, um, Bill was bringing up and what Dennis Hunt has said. Um, I was under the impression that a public health nurse, um, in a medical crisis, which we are in, has the authority to make decisions on her own affecting the county. I have told people that when they've said to me, "Well, you're her boss, do something." And I go, "I will not." In this particular instance, because it's a crisis, not just a medical decision, I felt that she's, has that authority. Now, whether we've given her that authority, it's an, importantly, she has that, I do not know. And that's why I think, I, I'm really sorry Clint's not here on the conversation.
Clint, hold on.
Hang on, is he here?
I thought he would join. No, maybe not. Hey, uh, Jay, uh, I did-
I'm not, I'm not done. I'm not done.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My feeling is before, I'm willing to enter into any discussions about task force and business leaders, who would that be and who isn't, what citizens would be on, which was important. I mean, before I get into any of those kind of discussions, advocating, I mean, giving away our, um, authority and making this into a, some, a debacle is what I, I see out of this, but I don't know. I want, I want legal advice on this as to where we stand, what authority do we have? What authority does the public health director have? And in a medical crisis only, because I agree with you, there ought to be a policy on, you know, when, when times are, I, I want to say normal, but certainly not a crisis. Um, I want to know what the legal ramifications of what we're doing, what we're not, what authority we have and what we don't. And I want to hear that from Clint is where I want to hear it.
Okay, uh, yeah, let me, let me respond. Um, you didn't hear what I said up front first while I asked, uh, that you and Clint talk with Dennis. Uh, and I did talk with Clint as well and asked him to, as I got these, uh, inputs from Dennis, I had Clint pull up those same statutes. I wish Clint was on board, but it's okay. I, I wasn't intending to resolve this and solve it right now, uh, Jay. And it is, and I, every time I asked the question, uh, Dennis would say, "By what authority did you give her that power? What was the resolution that was passed? If you, if you gave up the power, you cannot, ultimately it has to flow to that person, but you can't turn them loose in a vacuum, making decisions that are actually vested in the commissioners. It just doesn't have, you can't do that, according to Dennis."
That, that was clear was what you said.
We, we-
I don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I really think there's a, a lack of, uh, I don't know whether we, they didn't understand how to stand it initially, but it was approved, uh, at one point by somebody at a state level. We've got to chase the, the, that trail down. But for whatever reason, uh, it never in, um-
Are you there? My phone's dead.
Uh, Jay, I can hear you.
Okay. I didn't, so let's, let, let's get you and Clint to, to nail that down for us and we can clean up the documents. But in the meantime, we, uh, we, so, we can make-
Can I ask a question I asked a minute ago? What is precipitating this? Why are you bringing this up at this point? What, what is it that-
Because the only thing that I got involved with in the first place for, the reason was, because when we sent the orders out and I, and all three of us got, uh, I, Alyssa sent out a, a request, "Take a look at, uh, the order." It got lost on me because I, it got buried and, and then, uh, it was on a Friday night. Uh, and so I started, and then some of those, uh, impacts, we got a lot of calls. I'm not reacting to the calls. I'm reacting to the process. Because something of that magnitude that impacts the, the wellbeing of the economic, uh, wellbeing of this county and the health of the citizens should have had a verbal, uh, uh, response and a, and a resolution passed that we are going to adopt it like that so that it becomes a enforceable action. It can't be enforced if, if, without the power of, of, uh, behind you to do that. And so it isn't enforceable, according to Dennis.
Okay, let me, can I interrupt or interject here a couple of things? Um, so I guess first of all, Bill, my question would be, why do you keep saying Clint and Jay need to get with Dennis Hunt? What, what is that all about?
It's just me, ma, uh, all I'm saying is the recommendation, um, I don't care who does it, um, actually. And it, it can involve, uh, uh, anybody. It could be, uh, Alyssa with Clint, uh, and Jay. It could be me. Uh, you know, I'm stretched pretty thin and so are you. So I, and I, so I was just making a recommendation.
I'm not stretched thin and I can't do my job, Bill. I, you just kept saying Clint and Jay. I wondered where Tom Flower figured in as a commissioner.
Well, it's another commissioner. Right. If you, if you want to do it, that's fine. Uh, I just, all I did was bring it up and I, and I had the reasons for putting, suggesting Jay was because of his background with, uh, the, uh, statutes with, uh, with Dennis in the past. Uh, and then a Clint, of course.
Uh, if I may continue then, I certainly know Dennis Hunt. I was in a meeting with him in our courthouse in the boardroom on, uh, KFC Safety. Uh, as I recall, I was the only commissioner at that meeting. But I want to ask you this, Bill. Um, you've predicated twenty-one minutes of your talk based on what Dennis Hunt said. So I want to ask you, number one, what is his title? I didn't look it up because I didn't want to get off my, uh, uh, off my agenda here. What's his title? He's with C T S I?
He, C T S I, that's correct. He's an advisor. He, that's all he is.
All right. He's not an attorney?
No, he's not.
Crap.
I wasn't even, even looking at that from that point of view. All I used him for was a good, uh, source of getting to the, the heart of what the resolutions are because he knows them forwards and backwards, or the, uh, statute. So all I, all I did was, is help, help me go through and find the right statutes and that kind of thing. That's all. Um, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to exclude you on any of this at all. All I, I'm looking at is, is to me, looking at what the plan that exists for the agency, it, it is, is not complete, that's all. And I just, it's not, I didn't go out trying to find that. It just happened.
So let me finish my comments, if I may, because I've been sitting here patiently and quietly, um, listening to what you had to say. So I'd like to respond to some of that. Uh, number one, glaringly to me, uh, I think that, and I mean this with respect. I just don't know how else to say it. I think you're off track. Uh, public health has authority given to them by the state of Colorado through resolution to, or through Colorado by statute, twenty-five, one, five oh six, three, B, six. I will read it. It says, "This provision states that a public health agency has the authority to establish, maintain, and enforce isolation and quarantine and in pursuance thereof and for this purpose only, to exercise physical control over property and over the persons or the people within the jurisdiction of the agency as the agency may find necessary for the protection of the public health." End of quote. That's out of the statutes. There's no-
That, that is-
Uh-uh, let me finish, please.
Go ahead, go ahead.
There, there are no recommendations coming from public health. Those are orders, Bill and Jay. We have nothing to say about that. We don't vote on those. That is given, that authority and power was given to the public health agency by the state of Colorado, by the grace of her own heart. She shares that stuff with us. She is not mandated by law to do that. I don't care who in this county tries to put pressure on us as commissioners. We don't have that authority. We never have. That is public health's authority by statute. Some people may not like that, and I'm sorry that they may not like, but that by golly is the law. Secondly, um, I get it statewide that enforcement is an issue in Colorado. Given this pandemic, I don't think anybody will argue that. I don't know what the answer to that is. Uh, I do know that the public health agency and the law enforcement agency has had numerous conversations about enforcement. Those orders, uh, include possible penalties or fines. That's in there. Um, I get what, I think where Dennis Hunt's coming from. He's an insurance guy. He's not going to make determinations how we're running our county. We're going to let the law decide that, number one. We're going to do what's right for our county. Uh, my opinion of Mr. Hunt, the, uh, two times that I have been around him, is he's pretty, he's pretty high on Mr. Hunt. Uh, he'll go above and beyond to let you know how much he knows. But I don't believe he's an attorney, so he has no business citing the law to us. Um, we get, and I know, public health gets marching orders from the Fed and from the Colorado Department of Public Health. I know Alyssa's on this. I don't think Alyssa's dreaming this stuff up on her own. She has fallen directive from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and making appropriate decisions for our county. I think she is vetting what's appropriate for our county and what isn't. Uh, back to your bike riding example, Bill. Um, I, I just don't get it. I don't, I don't know what a tiger team is, number one. I don't even have a clue what that's about. I don't see that anybody other than the commissioners and/or public health and/or office of emergency management, I just don't see anybody else having the business being involved in making decisions. Uh, again, we can take input from whoever, but the mayors aren't going to decide what the county commissioners do. The county commissioners will decide that. I'll take a breath easy and let rebuttal on that first. Go ahead.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you you're wrong, Tom. You just misunderstood the whole thing. I wrote down the same thing you, you cited, twenty-five dash one dash five oh nine, one eight-
No, it's five oh six.
Uh, it's five oh six. That's the plan. That's the plan. Yep. And five oh one, five nine, six. Now, the point is, what you think the health agency is, Tom, is it Alyssa? It's not. The health, this is the public health agency is the health board of directors, which is, uh-
No, it's not. No, it is, Bill.
This has no power, uh, that unless it's been delegated to her and, and, and only her, that would be, but that is not the way it is done. So all I'm saying is that you're wrong in interpreting that way. She is not. You would never do that with a single point of, of, uh, and, and, and also, all, I didn't say the mayor's making a policy. You didn't understand what the task force is. It's recommendations. You have to have information for the board of directors to make decisions. It can't. It's not a directive from the state saying, "Go do this. Go to this." You've got to get the impacts. And the only people that understand the impacts are the business owners and, and the other people that are involved in enforcing it, et cetera. But all I'm trying to, to say is, let's sort it out. I, and I'm, and it, and just to be clear, I'm not saying Dennis is a lawyer and I don't care. All I did, if I got the statutes, I understand them. And I understand the, the need to have the, uh, board, it goes through the board of county commissioners, that's all. Period. And I, and you and I did not, uh, get a chance to debate those orders or recommendations from Alyssa at all. Period.
And nor should we. It's not our responsibility, Bill.
Yes, it is. All right, you're gonna, all right. I'll leave it at that.
Can I, wait, hang on. Can I mediate? Can I mediate just a second?
Can I mediate just a second? This is obviously a legal determination, not a emotional one. We must get Clint to tell us what in fact is the proper way of interpreting the ordinance that was brought up, excuse me, the state statute that was brought up.
Agreed.
And then we have a way of determining where we go from that. So, I think level heads can agree, that's great, but I think our legal advisor, Clint, to tell us what his interpretation is. I could be a little legal, but I'm not the county attorney, so I'm not going to even get in that part of discussion, other than let's get the county attorney to tell us.
Okay, this is, but I've been listening for about the last 15 minutes or so.
Welcome, welcome home, Clint.
Okay, I was muted so I couldn't join in, but I do have some legal input on what you're discussing, but I, I think it's too complicated and too time consuming to try to summarize anything over the phone.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question, Clint, real quick. Thank you for coming on. I figured I had no idea that you were successfully getting on. So I think one of the things here that Mr. Cannon and I disagree on, I'll paraphrase, and certainly, Bill, you can interject if I go off the rails, I think Bill is, one, uncomfortable, and two, doesn't think it's legal for a public health agency, I don't care who's running it, it's a public health agency, has the authority to make decisions and write orders concerning this pandemic that we're in. I believe that the public health agency does, by statute 25, or 25-1-506. If I'm wrong on that premise, then let's get that cleared up, number one. I don't think the commissioners have the authority to be voting on these orders. Your thoughts, sir?
Well, that's correct. The board of public health is separate from the board of county commissioners, and public health, whatever they decide to do, it's their decision, it's not the county commissioners'. So, public health doesn't have to run it past the commissioners. The commissioner's only role is to provide funds through appropriations for the public health agency, but besides that, their public health is totally independent.
Okay, I'm gonna have to interject here. Clint missed the front end here. The board of public health is the board of commissioners in this case. Period.
No, it isn't, Bill, I'm sorry. That's not a true statement.
Because, what is the health board? Tell me who the health board is then.
Now, you just asked me who they are, you were telling us what they are. There's a difference.
I'm just asking, yes, Tom, the board of public health for Custer County is the board of commissioners, which is our authority that we, stated it to be that. And so we are involved, we do make resolutions, and we do have the right, the public health agency director works for us. Period. Not in a vacuum. I don't want, I don't, I had no intent to debate all this and argue about it. I would like to get the research done by Clint and in depth, and we need to find the resolutions that stood this agency up initially to make sure that they did assume the authority or passed their authority to a board, and must have because we have a county health board as us.
The board of public health, yeah, the county board of health happens to be, the members of that board are the same members of the county commissioners, that is correct.
That's, that's correct.
I just, I just struggle, Bill, when you say to us that, I believe what you say, what you intend to say is your opinion that the public health agency can't operate in a vacuum. Because you say it doesn't mean it's fact. They can operate in a vacuum. They don't have to have anybody's permission other than the state statute.
But it's that.
So, you say a lot of things today that, that I maybe mistakenly represented the thought that because you're saying it, we're gonna have to do it, that we've got to make changes.
I didn't say it that at all, Tom. I said, "We need to get it understood." The way I've interpreted it, that's my opinion, but I would like to have Clint and whoever else wants to do it with him to pull up the track and figure out exactly what we've got established.
Well, I can, I can answer one thing. The board of public health is completely independent of the board of county commissioners. Just because the three of you serve on both boards, it doesn't mean that public health has to answer to the county commissioners. They're totally separate.
That's true, Clint, but you need to, you need to go.
Clint, I wasn't able to understand what you're saying.
Okay, let's do this one more time. Jay, go ahead, you had a question? Jay? Are you still there, Jay?
I'm here now, yeah. You know, I think this was my era. I went to hit on the call system like a woman, I took the fear off, like most.
You had a question?
Or Jay, you're cut now.
Okay, I missed Clint's last comment.
Okay, hold on, hold on just a second, Jay. We need to get a little more, Clint, will you say your last comment about public, the board of county health, county board of health?
The board of health is totally separate from the board of county commissioners. It does not answer to the board of county commissioners. The fact that the three of you both serve on the same boards does not make one answerable to the other. So, in that sense, public health does not take any marching orders from the commissioners. It doesn't have to report to the commissioners.
All right.
I got that loud and clear.
Okay.
And I just, but let's get some different solace.
Tom?
Again.
I said, "I'm gonna give Alyssa the opportunity to weigh in."
Tom, can I ask a question real quick?
Go ahead, Kelly.
So, are we talking maybe about two different things here where, because the commissioners are the board of health, like when Jackie comes in and you guys switch to the board of health and you take care of things like that? And then Alyssa is the public health agency? So could we be talking about two different public health things here?
Yes.
Can I, can I answer? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Clint.
Okay, the public health agency consists of the board of health and the public health director, which is Alyssa. That is the public health agency.
Yes, correct. Has nothing to do with the board of health.
Hey, let me make a quick point, because where does the power for the board of health come from? It comes from the state through the commissioners, and in this case, we could have set up a separate board. I'm just deciding what process is.
Not, not, Bill.
It is too, because why is the board on, you know, what power does the board of health have, Tom? They have to have some reason to be.
By statute, it does not come through the commissioners. The commissioners don't have authority over the board of health.
Okay, I think it is, Tom. Okay, we're gonna.
No, Tom's right.
Now, Jay, you said you had a question and you wanted to hear Clint's last comment. Did you have input about that? I cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's fine. I think this is a very healthy discussion. I think we need to resolve where we as the board of health and the public health department, what, what the statute says in terms of who has the right to issue orders under this particular circumstance that we're facing today. Philosophically, we can have a long discussion later, once this is all gone, as to did we do the right thing or the wrong thing, and set a procedure if we need to, but as we stand today, I will tell you, I am, I am adamantly opposed to a consortium, a tiger team, the wet mouth fire department telling me how we're gonna run the county under the unbelievable circumstances that we, I will have a major issue with that. So, I appreciate Clint, and I'm really glad you're here, listening to this conversation, because I really do feel that I would like to get maybe in a written memorandum or something, better understanding of what authority does our public health nurse have at this moment today? If the clerk has something and our public health nurse wants to do something with that or amend it slightly within her authority, does she have the right to do that? Or does that have to come to the three of us as public health approving what she did and debating it? Or does she have autonomy to go ahead and move forward? That is really the question on the table at the moment in my mind.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, Alyssa, I asked you to weigh in here a little bit if you care to. I know you've been sitting quietly.
Thank you. I'm really disappointed in the accusation, I guess, that I've done something wrong or that I have not acted in my authority. I most certainly would not ever do anything to put anybody in this community in harm, physically, emotionally, financially, certainly not health, health-wise. So, know that, and this is on public record, so I need it, I need it to be known, that I did send that order to the board of health before I sent it out. I did not have to do that. I did it because I was trying to get an inclusive thought on what was best. I did not hear anything back. The order needed to be pushed out, and that's what I did. I feel like I have worked completely within my scope thus far, and if you guys want to change what that scope looks like, then that's certainly up to you. However, I have an amendment to that order that needs to go out today, so.
And you have authority to send that, correct?
Yes. As from the statute, I have that authority. There are no resolutions that I'm aware of that takes that authority away from me as far as the statutes that have come down from the state of Colorado.
I don't think we could, I don't think we could pass a resolution that'll change the state statute. I'm really sorry. I think you have done an excellent job. I've read everything you've said before you actually pushed it out. I believe I've commented at least on one or two, "Good job" or something like that, or "I agree." And if I had an issue, I would have brought it up to you, but I really felt it was a courtesy what I was reading, and I think that's what you're saying also.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would say, Alyssa, that if you did not get any comments back when you asked for input on your last order, then you take that as nobody has any issues with it, or they don't have anything they want to change in it, and you move forward.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And I'd say the same thing.
Okay, I'm gonna go on. Let me go on record too.
Well, you're interrupting me, Bill. Hold on.
I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
If you feel this amendment needs to go out today, as far as I'm concerned, that is, you have the authority to do that. I will not entertain a vote as the chairman of the BOCC to allow you to send out an amendment to an order that's, that you have the authority to do. As Jay said, and I agree, I appreciate you sharing that information with us. It is absolutely a courtesy, and I thank you for that. If you have an amendment that needs to go out, that's your business. I have nothing to say about that. And I would appreciate your comments, but that's as far as it would go with me. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, and I'll object to that. I do have an objection. I do believe that she does not have that authority unless it's agreed to. But that, be it what it is, I am fine, we've accomplished what I want to accomplish, is to get it on the table. We've got to resolve it at some point. And I'm good with, and by the way, I believe Alyssa's done a good job of doing what she has with the documentation she has, with her understanding of the authority that that gave her. But I'm telling you, it's my opinion after a lot of research that it is misunderstood. That's all I can say for now. Let's move on and get it resolved.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure we're ready to go. Go ahead, Jay.
I'm just gonna say, I really would like Clint, if you would please, sir, to give us better guidance in this, because we're obviously of mixed minds as to how to interpret the statute. I know you just mentioned it a few minutes ago, but I sure would like to say, I would like to comment. Yes, Alyssa has this authority, and I don't mean Alyssa, the director of public health, or it needs to be ratified by the department of public health before the director of public health can issue something. I would like to have that so that I know that I'm doing the right thing.
I will send you a, go ahead, Tom.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Clint. I'll follow up when you're done.
I will put together a short memo that I'll get out to you this afternoon that states exactly where we stand under the statutes. The authority is board of health, the public health agency, the public health director, all of which is totally separate from the county commissioners. But I'll, I'll put something together, hopefully will answer the questions you've been talking about here.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna say, and I, and I kinda interrupted Clint, and I apologize for that. I'm wondering that it wouldn't be a good idea to schedule a workshop in the next day or two or three to continue this discussion, if that's what the group feels. Obviously, this pandemic thing has brought stuff to the surface that we normally wouldn't deal with, but, so I don't, I agree with Mr. Cannon when he said, I think he said, "It's not all about just this pandemic." And I agree, we, we need to know these kind of things that Clint's talking about, whether we're in a pandemic or not, doesn't matter.
Correct, I agree, Tom.
Of being well informed as a, as board of county commissioners. I certainly wouldn't have a problem getting on another phone conference in this workshop to continue this conversation. I'm certainly not trying to dodge any bullets here. I will stay here as long as it takes for everybody to have an opportunity to express their opinions and their ideas. I don't.
Well, that's where I was. I agree. I think workshop, even, even, well, they have to give a 24-hour notice, so it'd be day after tomorrow, I'm good with that. Or anytime, and it gives Clint plenty of time to do the right research, too.
Just a second, Alyssa, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Alyssa.
I'm sorry. So, a couple of things about that. First of all, we have the resolution already saying that we don't have to have a 24 hours in order for you guys to have a meeting.
That is correct.
Second of all, so I, you guys, I understand and agree that this all needs to get worked out, but right now, I'm still dealing with COVID-19 and timely things. So I need to know whether or not I can push that order out, and as far as what is happening for COVID-19 and our standing EOC right now, what we need is a policy group meeting to determine what can happen for COVID right now, because that's what we're in the thick of right now, is this disaster, this emergency.
Correct. And Clint, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't think Alyssa has to ask anybody about pushing out her amendment to her order.
Well, the statute says that the duties of the public health agency shall include the following duties, and then they get to that part you read about establish, maintain, and enforce isolation and quarantine. So, I think that implies that the board of public health and the public health director should sort of be on the same page, but to the extent that you've delegated this to the public health director to act. the extent that you've delegated this to the Public Health Director to act on your behalf as the Board of Health, then, and she's doing what she needs to do. She's running it past you. She submitted it for any comment, and there wasn't any. And that's, now she submitted this proposed amendment that she wants to get in place. I'm trying to look at it here. But, uh, I mean, unless any of you have any strong objections to, uh, and I see she did change it as far as, uh, restaurants, liquor stores, et cetera. Okay, that was one of the objections, I think. Uh, I'm just, anyway, I'm looking at it here. But if none of you have strong objections to her proposed amendment, she ought to just be able to go ahead and do it.
That is my feeling, yes.
And I haven't, I have not had time to go through it yet personally. And if, Tom, you've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, uh, let me know. You too, Jay. But maybe, uh, when, when, when the latest we can get it out, if we got to tonight, uh, we can do it whenever. Let's, let's get it, it's in there and let's move.
We're not getting it out. It's the Public Health Agency that's getting it.
Tom, we are the Board of Health, and that, and what Clint just said i- is the same thing. It, it, it's not a courtesy. We are with the Director in concert dealing with this. Uh, and we just did.
I press the...
I just need to get it out as soon as possible. So whatever you guys decide.
Okay.
My feeling is you have the right to send it ASAP whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll keep it. Comments will be back into her here in a few minutes.
My, my position is we don't have a decision to make. That is your decision, Jay.
Exactly right.
If you're sharing it with us.
And I agree with that comment.
Uh, anything else, Alyssa?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay. Meredith, would you like to weigh in? Office Emergencies, your management?
Yeah. Um, a few things. Um, so, the process that we have been conducting within the EOC and with this, this incident, um, I feel has not overstepped any, um, any scope that's been in place by various statutes, any resolutions, or even the incident command structure that we have in place. Um, I kind of wanna explain a few things, just for situational awareness within this conversation. Um, a policy group, which would be decision-makers at a higher level. So, um, per a normal or emergency that we've experienced before would be the Board of County Commissioners, of course, mayors, or special districts that have been affected by the incident. So, um, the process that would happen is the same as any incident, no matter pandemic, fire, flood, whatever it is. Um, the policy group would give a, um, broad-stroke example of what they want. So, um, this would be, you know, uh, wanna minimize death due to COVID-19. So then the incident commander, which right now we're functioning in a unified command with Alyssa and myself, um, and then we would take that, um, guidance from the policy group, create an objective, and then put action to that objective. And those actions have been placed in front of the Board of Health, Board of County Commissioners, the policy group, um, as, as our recommendation. We haven't heard anything back other than, "Yeah, that looks great. Thank you for your work." Um, so we push that out. Um, and so, in any incident, there's always room for improvement on coordination and communication, always. That's always an after-action review item that we need to improve on. So I'm not saying we can't be better than that. There's always room for improvement. However, um, within that coordination is having policy group meetings. Um, and per that resolution, and also within a disaster declaration and putting in place what we have, those, those, um, policy group meetings can be conducted within an ICS structure, within our EOP has been activated. And within that, there's place for those meetings to happen. Um, you can have your opinions on that, but that's how I see we go forward. So, um, while I think it's good to continue on and have, um, these discussions, those discussions can be in a different format. Um, I'm gonna say that there's a difference between, um, like, there's certain discussions we need to have that are sensitive information, um, that can't be released, even certain things that we have to hold tight on. So, um, I just wanna, we can move forward in better coordination, um, but I would like to still keep that structure that we've been having, maybe improve it, but that same structure. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes. You have not had a policy group convened yet, correct?
Yeah, I've asked for it, uh, but we haven't. We've, we've done, um, we've done emails and phone calls, um...
Yeah. We haven't had a formal conference call for your policy group.
Not today, no.
Okay. Um, I guess, another question I have, and maybe this would be a workshop, uh, participant, and that is Kristy Coleman with the Department of Homeland Security, or the South Region. I mean, she's the Director of the South Region. Homeland Security has their fingers up into this pandemic as well, correct?
Right. So, we, we're having coordination calls with the South Region three times a week altogether, but then we're, I'm in communication, the EOC is in communication with Kristy on an hourly basis, to be realistic. Um, and so, we can, I can see if she has time to do a call, then you guys can ask whatever questions you have. Um, she can be involved in that policy group meeting, um, for sure. Um, but we, we have been in constant communication.
Okay, okay. If we have a workshop, do you think it would be appropriate to invite her to sit in on that conference call to further discuss what we've been talking about here this morning?
Yeah. Um, I think that's fine. Um, I don't see her saying anything differently than I am, maybe speaking it clearer. But, um, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, further comments or discussion? Discussion was part of the agenda item that, uh, Bill put on. So, I'm assuming when you said consideration, you're really not, uh, Bill wanting any kind of an action today, correct?
No, no, no. I'll, I'll repeat what I said again. I, I, I looked at this as a discussion, and the recommendation was take it further, which we, we all agreed we would. We don't know what day. Are we gonna do it tomorrow or the next day?
Uh, I would defer to Clint first off to see what he thinks about a timeline. Um, I, I guess you were willing to do some research, Clint. So what do you think? Couple of days to do that?
Well, I can, I can get an email out to you this afternoon. The specific legal questions are fairly straightforward. I can answer that. Um, I mean, having a workshop to go in more depth, um, I think there has to be a 24-hour notice since it's a public meeting, even though there won't be any decisions made. So, probably need to put it up until Thursday at the earliest.
Okay. Um, Mr. Prince, what do you think about that?
I, I'm anxious to read what the email that we're gonna receive from counsel is. And then, you know, for the clarification, I think we should call the workshop after we read that. If it's crystal clear and there's really nothing to this, I don't see reason to do it. Although I'm always open for discussion.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I've definitely got some thoughts and opinions that I want to share. I, I withheld them this morning. Uh, I just didn't want to get bogged down on one agenda item. Uh, I would, I would prefer to schedule a workshop, irregardless of what, uh, Clint sending email may say. I, I hope it's gonna educate us, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean I still don't have some thoughts and opinions that I have to share with the Commissioners.
I, I agree with you, Tom. The, uh, the other thing we're losing sight of, it's a bigger question than just the legal authority of the Board of Health. It's the, uh, actual, uh, chain of resolutions that set it up in the first place that we don't have records of for some reason.
Well, then maybe not.
Or maybe not. So if that's not the case, we need to, we need to rectify it. So in other words, we need to understand what we don't have or what we don't know in order to make it, uh, come into performance. So, it's a workshop.
Yeah.
Points, I think.
It's your opinion. We may need to do something. It may have been done by state statute, Bill.
No, I don't know. And that, and that's the key. Anything we do, we, we cannot usurp state statute.
That's not what I said.
We cannot, I understand that, but if state statute makes it clear, there's nothing we need to do. So, I, I would like to see.
Jay, the, the point that I was trying to make is that the resolutions are, we can't find them, that set up the Public Health Agency. All we have is a resolution that set up a, an emergency operation then.
Bill?
If you read it, read what's he sent out.
Bill, my point was, there may not be a resolution. The county may not have done that. It could have been done by state statute. That's all I'm saying. There not be a resolution even existence because we probably didn't have the authority to do that as commission. It was probably done by the state. Kelly, I think I...
Maybe, um...
So, go ahead, Kelly.
I haven't had a chance to look for a resolution yet, Bill. We just talked about this last night, so I need to...
Yeah, I, I know that. But it should have been referenced in the, uh, data, I would have thought. Anyway, you're right. Let's go.
Can I insert something here?
Go ahead.
The very first, the very first sentence of 25-1-506 says, "Each county by resolution of its Board of County Commissioners shall establish and maintain a county public health agency."
Okay.
So there should have been a resolution at some time in the past, but just establishing it, not, not setting any other regulations, because everything else is regulated by the state statutes.
Right.
Got it. So, to Bill's point, then, uh, based on that, yes, there should be a resolution somewhere. And obviously, when Kelly has the time, she will probably pursue that. As we can as well. It doesn't have to be Kelly. We can do that research as well.
It could probably go back to 2008, or maybe even before that, when that resolution appeared. Because that's when they amended the statute. But it's, I can't tell from looking at this.
Okay. Uh, Kara, are you still on the line?
I am.
Will you also look in your files for a resolution about that timeline, 2007, 8, or 9, about the establishment of a public health agency?
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. I'm confident that it had to have happened, right? Or we wouldn't have...
It has.
So, and I'm not taking it after the fact that, that we, it wouldn't hurt us one bit to educate ourselves and look at that documentation. I didn't realize the statute said a resolution. I assumed it was, they were established by the state. But that's what you get for assuming, or that's what I get for assuming. So, I just, for the good of the order, I just want to say this, that certainly on my behalf, I will always try to say this is my opinion. Uh, and I, I just think we have to be careful about making blatant statements that may or may not apply to how the Commissioners feel or believe. Uh, if, Bill, if you believe something, that's fine. I take no exception to that. But just because you believe it doesn't mean we have to do it. That would have to be a group decision on all three of our behaves. That's all. That's what I was getting at, or it is.
I agree a hundred percent. Always have. We always vote, uh, to, to do things. It's my opinion, and I made that clear upfront, I thought. But if I didn't, it was my opinion on base of my research.
Can I say, uh, Jack, one more thing here?
Yes, go ahead.
I think, I think Alyssa needs to know for sure that it's okay for her to go ahead and issue that amended, uh, order today.
I support her doing that, but I don't believe it's my authority to tell her no.
And it's not, it's not a, something that you vote on. I think it's just as the Board of Health, if you don't have any objections to it, then she can go ahead and do it.
That's right. And if I don't have any, and I'll get a couple of comments back to her if there are any major things that I've, I haven't had a chance to go through it. So I'm gonna go through it now after we adjourn. And I'll get her some comments.
One other thing...
You can take them or leave them. Uh, doesn't, it, it, but we need to know what it is.
Just one other thing to point out. Right now, this is a meeting of the County Commissioners. It's not a meeting of the Board of Health.
That's correct. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, you know, your, your point was well-taken, Bill. Because if we give her our opinions, that's what they are, right? We're not saying as a County Commissioner, "You need to change this. I'm telling you to change this." I don't think we have that authority. We have to convene a meeting to even make any kind of decisions. But, uh, I think we give her our opinions and recommendations. I don't think she gives us her opinions or anything.
I, I, uh, say the same thing again. My opinion. You gave her yours. I mean, Jay gave her his. And until we find out differently, that's, that's all we can do right now.
Right. Oh, I agree. Absolutely. So, uh, Alyssa, you have a question about the amendment you want to push out?
No, I don't have any questions. I emailed it to you all. Um, really, there's just a few simple words changed, so...
Right.
Stop. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. Uh, in terms of discussion on the, uh, last agenda item, and do we, I would prefer to set, pick a day for a workshop, today. And I certainly would be open to Thursday or Friday, either one. Although granted, Friday is kind of a religious holiday being Good Friday. So, I would certainly take input from the Commissioners about that.
I have a doctor's appointment Thursday morning. I could do it in the afternoon. Guys, go to Pueblo in the morning. Okay?
Let's, uh, set it for Thursday afternoon for now, and, because I think we're tied. I, I gotta look at my calendar, too. We'll see. But I think Thursday afternoon's good, looks like.
Okay. Uh, which brings up a point, and, and I'll justify why I'm asking. I wanted to ask originally where everybody was at physically this morning. I am at home. I didn't ask anybody else. Are you at home, Bill?
Yeah, I'm at home.
And Jay, I know you are, right?
Uh, I'm, I'm following the, not even recommendation. I'm gonna call it an order, but maybe it was a recommendation to be quarantined until Monday. So I am home.
No, it wasn't a recommendation. You didn't have any choice. Um...
I understand that.
Kelly, where are you? Are you at work or at home?
I'm at work.
Okay, all right. And Kara, you're at home?
Yes, I'm at home.
Okay, okay. Um, so, yeah, I, Thursday afternoon works for me. Uh, Jay, what do you think?
I, I'm just sitting here. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy.
Um, yeah.
I can be back.
Go ahead, come here.
I can be back, but I was just gonna say, I can be, I'm at home, by the way. I can be back by 2 o'clock for my doctor's appointment. Okay?
Um, is 3 too late in the day?
Not for me.
3 is good.
I'm good with 3.
Okay. Kelly, was that Kelly? I'm sorry. I didn't recognize the voice.
It was the one that...
Okay. Kelly, you okay with that?
I'm good.
Um, so then I would move that we schedule a Commissioners' workshop on April the 9th at 3 o'clock PM, uh, via, uh, teleconference. And I could assume that the three Commissioners, the County Attorney, and the Court to the Board, and Public Health and Office of Emergency Management would be in attendance.
I, I think we need to ask Vern if he would also put this out on the website. We need open this to the public. help this to the public.
Yeah, we'll do that during discussions. I need a second if you want to pursue.
100%, I'm sorry, I thought we had a second.
No, so it's been moving second to schedule a commissioner workshop at 3:00 PM via teleconference discussion? Go ahead, uh, Jay, you're right on.
Uh, if Vern would please put this on our website and anywhere else we can get it out, maybe Facebook, uh, just so the public has an opportunity. And then kind of a question to go along with this, is it the same call-in number, the same ID, or will we get a different call-in number or different ID? Does anybody know how that works?
I'm sure the, I'm sure the ID number will change, because that's, uh, being specific.
Okay.
Vern, are you still on?
Yes, sir. Um, I can set it up, I can set it up either way, but I will change the call-in ID, the conference code, so that it's different.
And then will you send out an email with that information on it?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, and for the record, the purpose of this, uh, teleconference workshop is to further discuss, um, I would take some help here, gentlemen, I'm gonna say further discuss the, uh, organization.
Authority of the public health nurse, and I'd leave it at that. I was gonna say, with reference to the public, public health department, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Agency, agency. Right, the agency, it is an agency, it's not a board. Um, and is that, is that adequate, Clint, in your mind? Uh, I would guess maybe our conversations may drift from that specific thing, but I don't know that we're, it's not an executive session, so we're not bound to a certain topic, are we?
No, it's, it's open, the public can listen in and say what they want.
Yeah, I agree. I think, uh, it also gives us the opportunity to make, maybe Kelly will find the resolution, we need to take a look at what authorities have been delegated, if any.
Yeah, that's. Go ahead, go ahead.
But it's the authority, that was the Board of Health, is from the state, not from the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, go ahead.
That was gonna be my question, is this a workshop of the Board of County Commissioners or the Board of Health?
Um, I, the motion was county commissioners. If that needs to change, I guess we can amend that. Clint, your thoughts?
Well, all we're gonna do is clarify, um, the legal status of the Board of Health, and this, just to inform the commissioners. So I think we can do it as a commissioners' workshop, where I, you know, where I explain the law to you, and you'll have my memo ahead of time, so, you know, the Board of Health will know exactly what its authority is, and what the authority is of the Public Health Director.
Um, I wanted to throw out one more thing for reference, and this would certainly be applicable, uh, in preparation for our workshop. Um, Alyssa had sent out an email, I've got a copy of it here, but I'm gonna find, uh, about, and it was titled, "Public Health Authority Fact Sheet, Dated March," well, it was dated March, updated March 3rd, but she sent it out yesterday, I believe, Alyssa, can you speak to that? I'm looking for it as we're talking.
Yeah, it was, it was last, updated March 3rd. Um, it was sent out to me in the very beginning of all of it, and I've sent it out a couple of times, so.
Okay, uh, oh, and I know why I can't find, I spoke to you about that, was that you had inadvertently put somebody else in, it was Tom, that's why I didn't get it directly. But I just wanted to mention, uh, that Alyssa sent that out yesterday, um, 5:50, quarter after 5:00, 5:14, something like that. So I think there's some good information in there that we can also use to, uh, in preparation for our workshop. Um, and I did check, uh, there was an executive order from Jared Coler, so it was an order, it was an recommendation on the whole stay-at-home thing, there's been some conversation about that. So, gentlemen, uh, commissioners, did you?
It was called a, an authority fact sheet, is that right? I've got it on Monday, I think Alyssa sent it out.
Monday, yesterday, yes. There's the pandemic plan, and there's the COVID-19 plan included in that.
One IP, she only had the fact sheet on it, but I saw the other one, too.
What?
I think they were separate emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, two emails. Yeah, two emails.
So the, uh, 5:14 is the time on the email with the emergency operation plan, pandemic plan, and the COVID-19 plan.
Right.
And I'm just checking here real quick, uh.
Can I make a comment while you're checking?
Yes, go ahead.
After I read that yesterday, I thought it was their, what information? I asked Alyssa if she would mind if I posted that on my commissioner page, Facebook page, and I did, so I just want you to know that.
Okay. Okay. All right, other discussion pertaining to the motion? Hearing none will proceed to vote on. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jackie. Um, I, I wonder if Clint might also give you guys some information about liability for, um, any takings that are done either in the name of the B O C C or in the name of public health. Uh, both the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution does say that any takings of physical property or business property, um, and business is property, um, will be reimbursed, and who is responsible for that? So I think maybe there's some liability that goes with that, that maybe Clint needs to advise you guys on, and I'll just back right out, and that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, good point. Uh, certainly, I don't think we're anywhere near the takings, but you're questioning legitimate, so, um, I can't feel so inclined to continue that, uh, that will be fine, but, uh, I'd be hard pressed by these set of sitting committees taking anything, but I'm only speaking for me.
The commissioners aren't taking anything, it's the Board of Health who would be liable for anything, so just keep that distinction in mind.
Thank you, that's my thing. Yep.
And I think, uh, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought takings included if you lose business, is that a property or not?
No, no.
Let's not get into that legal discussion, then.
Yeah, I've read that taking thing with Jackie on a planning and zoning issue, and I didn't, I don't think it has anything to do with that, but I, again, I'm not an attorney, so I would defer.
All the question, or did we already vote?
Uh, no, we, I was allowing public comment, and then we got off on to that response, so, um.
May I ask just one question? Uh, sorry, this is Elliot from the Tribune. Um, could I, uh, Commissioner Flower or Clint, if you could just repeat for me the numbers of those state statutes that you were quoting? And was that the only one?
Uh, well, the whole statute, 25-1, uh, I think, I don't know what it goes through, but they all have to do with this, but 506 is the one that's particularly pertinent.
509, that's up the directory.
Yeah, 509 to 21-1-509, 25-1-509.
And to Clint's point, uh, I quoted 506-3B6, and then also 506-3B7, uh, about closing facilities or canceling events is also, but they're all in that, uh, 25-1-506.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anything else, uh, for discussion before we vote? Hearing none will proceed to vote on scheduling a county commissioner workshop on April the 9th at 3:00 PM via teleconference. Any ayes?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries, and we will let, uh, sorry, we will give Vern the opportunity to, uh, set that up for us unless he wants someone else to do it.
I'll get that set up, uh, shortly.
Okay, and you'll host that as well?
Indeed.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Uh, anything else for the good of the order, or public comment before we adjourn?
Oh, we didn't talk about, talk about the dump fee issue, we're gonna wait till the 15th to discuss that, the only opportunity we have?
Uh, if that's, if you, if that's a request to put it on the agenda, we will do that, yes.
Well, it was on the agenda for tomorrow, that's the only point. And we wanted to try to save, uh, the people that have been impacted on their jobs, money, if possible, that, and that doesn't, you know, if it didn't impact the county too much. And I asked Russ to put together, uh, options for us.
And did you proceed those?
Not until, uh, tonight, I gave him until tomorrow to do it, so I'll follow up with him, but, uh, I haven't seen him yet.
Okay, so would you like this on the agenda for the 15th?
Yes, put it on for the 15th, and see what, if I get something really earth-shaking that we might call a special meeting for, maybe we could do that.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Kara, are you on board here?
Yes, how would you like that worded?
Consideration of waiving landfill fees.
Right.
Yes.
We'll try to avoid the word dump.
Okay.
Never happen.
Yeah, I, I get that, I get that sense, yes, uh. Yeah, so, uh, we put a consideration of if we decide to take it to a vote, we can, um, that at least that allows us that leeway, uh, we can discuss and or consider, and. Anything else, gentlemen, to come before the board?
No, but, uh, just from my perspective, I appreciate the debate and the opportunity to look into that. Good meeting, thanks, guys.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I commend you for having the interest in taking the time to be to be charged to the visit with, uh, Dennis Hunt and, um, and it's, what we went through today is a thousand times better than a stick in our head in the sand, I can tell you that much, in my opinion.
I agree with that.
You know, if we can't have lively debate, then something's wrong, so.
Of course, and it was respectful, that's the part I liked the most.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, public comment? Wow, so we get hammered all, on Facebook and everywhere else? When we have, when we offer the opportunity, man, nobody shows up. I don't need to discount the ones that are here, I need anyone else.
Do you want more public comment?
Uh, if it is on your heart, yes, we sure do.
No, no, just say I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to sitting in on the special workshop, I'm sure it will be very informative.
Right, yeah, well, this was Elliot, right?
Yes.
And I would say this to all of the media, um, out of fairness and hopefully a certain amount of decorum and respect, I would ask that, uh, quotes be put into context, you know, it is tough to read and hear stuff out of context that makes absolutely no sense when it was said in context, and so I would just ask for consideration of that from the media.
Sure.
If there's no further, uh, public comment, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. I'll second it.
Okay, in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Again, Vern, thank you for your.